Put that in the form of a motion.
Thank you Supervisor DeSanto, and I forgot to ask, did everybody have a chance to read the minutes? And is there any questions or concerns on the minutes? Okay, will I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you Supervisor Givanas, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the financial reports for August 2020. Has everybody had a chance to go over the financial reports? And are there any concerns or questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt, but we are getting a couple of messages that a passcode is being asked for. So if you could give me a minute, I'm going to reply to those emails.
Okay. Do we have to start the meeting over again, or?
Just give me one moment here, please. Ms. Capalletti?
Yes.
Do you still have that passcode listed?
I do have it. Would you like me to send it to you, Mr. Crest?
That would be fantastic.
I will text it to you now.
Age is zoom.
Yeah.
Would you like me to text it to you or send it to you on the Zoom?
Why don't you text it because these two people can't get in. One did, two can't, so.
I just sent it to you.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Technology, it's so wonderful.
Makes our life so much better. Kind of reminds me of the Jetsons, you know, I wonder.
We don't have the flying cars yet, though. We do have robotic dogs, don't we?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're replying to those, just one more moment, please.
Okay.
Well, the good news is everybody knows how to use the info email.
Silence on the air. EJ, do you have any songs you'd like to sing, or?
I don't, I don't.
Joe, how about you? You got any, anything?
No, I can't say I have, Kevin.
Don't look at me, Kevin.
I'm not saying a word. And I'm not either, I'm not, I would chase everybody off by some.
Me too.
Yeah, because how about them Eagles?
That's not a great topic either there now.
Were these people able to get on? He's talking about the Eagles, like, let's get on with this, with this. Actually, actually, this meeting is probably more entertaining than the Eagles game.
Yeah, you're probably right.
Yeah, we're all gonna watch the Eagles, the Eagles game again on Sunday.
I'll be quoted in the Inquirer tomorrow.
Or the Times Herald.
I'm Harold.
Okay, those are the last ones.
Okay, great. All right, so we can start again?
Start with the finance reports?
No, I did not. Question, if everybody had a chance to read and if there are any questions or concerns? I'd like to make a motion to approve the financial reports for August 2020. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you Chairwoman Capalletti, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda is the township reports. Did everybody have a chance to go over the township reports? And are there any questions or concerns on that? All right, none being, I'd like to make a motion to approve the township reports for August 2020. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you Supervisor Givanas, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, citizens to be heard. Mr. Chris, do you have any, any emails, or?
Other than people trying to get on to the meeting? Just give me, just give me one second.
You have all night.
All right, I'm just putting the passcode on the other website.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just as, as an aside, we are going to be putting the financial report and some township reports on the website going forward. So just as an FYI.
Okay. Okay, that's great.
Okay, so I put the passcode on to the, the website. And hopefully, anyone who's not connected will know to go back there to, to check it and see.
Okay.
And in the meantime, there are no citizens to be heard on the email.
Okay, and the supervisor like to have any comments, or? No words?
I have a, I have a comment, it might not be too uplifting, but I'm a comment less. I know that social media is sometimes a vacuum for people's platforms. There is, there are a few sites that, that I, community sites for this area on Facebook. One of the things that I wanted to comment on is a lot of, I've seen on multiple occasions over time, whenever someone comments on something, or has an adverse opinion, sometimes they're called out for being renters. Sometimes they're called out for being, for living in a less affluent part of the township than others. I would just like to remind all residents that all residents are important equally. And as a community, we should, we should really try to be kinder to one another and, and stop and listen. So that's my, that's my public service announcement for this meeting. Let's all try to be kind to each other because we're hurt. Even on social media.
Yeah. That's definitely uplifting. Because I, I agree that we do have people that rent. We have older citizens, we have younger residents that are just trying to make their way in life. And they should not be treated as second-class citizens. Just because they're, they're in this, they may want to be. They may want to be renters and not own property. That's why we have Timberlake Apartments, or Decav Apartments, or other apartments that we have in the township. They've all been approved and we welcome all our residents. And yeah, that, that's just, that's not acceptable at all.
The defense, the defense has been, well, I'm entitled to my opinion. Well, you are entitled to your opinions. That doesn't mean that you need to share it all the time. So.
Yeah.
It's all I got.
Anybody else have any comment?
I'll jump in with something, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind. Recently, I went for my annual checkup at the doctor's office and got my flu shot afterwards. So I want to encourage everybody to get their flu shot. It is incredibly important, critical, that you get your flu shot this year of all years with the pandemic happening and the fact that we know that, you know, there are overlapping symptoms of the coronavirus and our standard flu that we tend to see, you know, through the winter months. And in order to help make sure that if we're getting sick, it'll help the doctors. It'll help the, you know, the hospitals understand what's going on with your body and figuring out what's wrong, whether it's the virus or the flu. If you've gotten the flu shot, it decreases the likelihood of the flu. And they'll be able to get you the care that you need much quicker. If, you know, heaven forbid, you do end up diagnosed with, or contracting the coronavirus. So please go get your flu shot. Walgreens, CVS, Small Town Pharmacy, East Norton Pharmacy. You know, your doctor's office, all of those places offer the flu shots in one way or another. Weiss Markets, I'm sure ShopRite probably has a pharmacy as well in there that does it. Wherever you have a pharmacy, your doctor's office, please go get one. I encourage you to do so.
Yeah, thank you for that. Anybody else?
All right, I'll join in. I want to just second what Supervisor Capalletti has said. I had a, a visit with my doctor, it was a telemedicine visit, so she could not give me the flu shot through the computer. But I do have it scheduled for, in, I think, the week after next. She didn't want me to get it too early, but then again, yeah, it takes some while to get, take effect. And the other thing I want to say is, you know, we've changed seasons today. We're into, into fall or autumn. And I, I've been following very closely the county and, and our commissioner about the positivity rate. And the, the good news is it's going down. We were down to 3.0, I think from a 3.3 or 3.4. Now, it doesn't seem like much, but the coronavirus is still alive and well. And I just want to tell people that, you know, it's not taking a vacation, it's not taking a holiday. It's, it didn't go away at the end of the summer. So everybody just keep what you're doing, keep it up. Keep the social distancing, keep wearing the mask. Keep washing your hands, using hand sanitizer. And, and we'll try to stay safe. My little, I'll make a note here that I wear my mask wherever I go. But my mask, I can't show it to you now, I don't have it here in front of me. But my mask is an Eagles mask. And I've been a little embarrassed to wear it lately. So I've switched to my Villanova mask instead. And Mr. Kilkenny will, will second that. So that's my comment.
I approve.
Thank you.
And thank God, the, thank God Jay Wright announced he's not going to the Sixers. Amen.
Yes.
Okay, anybody else have any, any comments? Okay, if not, we'll move on to all business. I'd like to bring up ordinance number 586. And I'd like to ask our solicitor, Sean Kilkenny, to review this ordinance.
Sure, thank you very much, Chair McDevitt. As you know, this ordinance was introduced or advertised at our last meeting in August. And again, I wanted to briefly explain the ordinance. It puts another tool in the toolbox of the East Norton Police I, to, for dealing with minors who may be in possession of small amounts of marijuana. This does not preclude the East Norton Police from citing someone under the criminal code, crimes code under discretion. But what it does is gives people essentially multiple chances, three chances, per se, to have a ticket before they are cited under the crimes code and working with the police. This is, again, been supported by our, our Chief of Police and many municipalities to include Norristown did it a, over a year ago. West Norton has also introduced this ordinance. And many other municipalities in the Commonwealth are taking this approach. So also too, within the ordinance, is if we get to a district court level, it strongly encourages community service as opposed to any kind of punishment. And giving a person the opportunity to rehab and provide valuable service to the community rather than staining someone's record currently for using a small amount of marijuana or being in possession of marijuana paraphernalia. That concludes my summary, unless if anyone, the Board of Supervisors has any questions.
Okay, no questions? All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to pass ordinance number 586, Marijuana Decriminalization. Do I have someone like to make a motion?
I'll put that in the form of a motion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Chairwoman Capalletti, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you Supervisor DeSanto, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, new business, resolution number 2816, granting preliminary and final land development for 3018 Whitehall Road. I'd like to call on our engineering services, Jim Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to introduce this project. And then one of our guests, Michael Clement, is the attorney for the project. And he'll do a short presentation.
Okay.
Agree to all the conditions in the resolution, I'm sure. This is a three-lot subdivision, there is an existing house, they're creating two new lots at 3018 Whitehall Road. There was a zoning relief required for lot width because they missed by about six inches, I think, on each lot. And then to keep the existing house where it is, they needed a variance in the side yard setback. 20 feet required, they only had 18. Mr. Clement, you may, if Dave lets you, you may begin speaking. There he is.
Yes, thanks, thanks, Jim. Thank you for, for the time. Everything Jim said is, is correct. It's relatively straightforward, three-lot subdivision. We were granted the variance and we do agree to all the conditions set forth in the resolution with respect to contributions and fees in lieu. I can, let me see if I can work this. The traffic impact fee of $4,146, meaning there are two new units at $2,123 each, is acceptable. The fee in lieu of sidewalk, oh boy. My, whatever Jim says it is, it is, I agree to that.
$7,475 is the cost of the sidewalk.
Fine, thank you. And fee in lieu of open space and the amount of $2,000 per lot at $4,000 is also agreeable. The conditions set forth in the review letters are acceptable. And if you have any questions, I would be pleased to respond.
Just real quick, so the, before the board asks any questions, there are conditions, waivers, A through F, contained in this resolution, Mr. Sullivan. From a staff perspective, were any of those objectionable?
No, both the township engineer and myself agree that these, there's no objections to these waivers as are indicated in this resolution.
Then, Mr. Minor. Then, Mr. McDevitt, when, if and when the board, after asking questions or not asking questions, wants to move forward with this, just the motion would be a motion to approve the resolution and waivers. So just, it's very clear, it's kind of separated out from the resolution.
Okay, understand. Okay, is there any questions from the board?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. So the property that we're talking about is not the, the Pantone property that we've all talked about multiple, on multiple occasions. Where is this property located on Whitehall Road? I know that I was given the number, but where in relation, but I know it's between Township Line and Germantown, correct?
It's basically across the street from Heatherwood.
Yes.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
Okay, on, on the opposite side of Whitehall.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I just have one. What do you estimate the square footage for these properties to be?
The, the houses should be in the range of 3,000 square feet and up. It's, our, our typical home that we would build in, on that type of a lot is 2,950 square feet, give or take. Most people with lots like these will add, add a bit.
Okay, great. All right, well, if we have no other questions, I'm going to.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to point out that the planning commission recommended preliminary final approval on this project at a vote of 5 to 1.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the, let's see where I'm at here. Seems I've lost it. Land development, granting land, preliminary, final land development for 3018 Whitehall Road. And also waivers for the, for this property. Do I have a second?
A second.
Supervisor DeSanto, any questions on the motion? None being, I'd like to take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda, sorry, somebody?
I think you wanted to say thank you, so.
Oh, okay. Yes, you're welcome. This is, this is kind of a crazy meeting tonight. 2021 Minimum Municipal Obligations. I would like to call on our Chief Financial Advisor, Mr. Chris. Mr. Chris, there?
I'm, I'm here, thank you, Mr. Chris. First, my apologies for the, the meeting confusion. We did have a number of people trying to connect to the meeting. I think in the future, although it's not necessary, we'll include the passcode on the, on the the meeting notification page, just in case it happens. We do have about a half a dozen, seven people who have been able to join the meeting. We did have one person who was unable to still connect to the meeting after the passcode.
Okay.
But I think since we were able to get all the other people into the meeting, it must have been something on that.
On their end.
On their end, so.
Yeah.
As you had said, it's strange times, we'll just adjust as we keep going forward and make it smoother each time. But to discuss the minimum municipal obligations, each year at this time of year, we meet to discuss the topic of the minimum municipal obligations. And basically, the MMOs are required by law and they're the amount that are necessary to maintain the solvency, the, the financial commitment necessary to maintain the solvency of our pension plans. The MMO calculations are based on the actuarial valuations that are performed by our actuary for the two plans. In this case, the latest one was done January 1st of 2019, and that's what's used to calculate these MMO amounts. What you should have in front of you are two worksheets. One MMO worksheet for the police pension plan and an MMO worksheet for the non-uniform pension plan. And the bottom line shows the amount that we're, that the township will have to contribute to each of the pension plans. The minimum amount necessary to contribute to the pension plans. And these amounts are also offset by state pension aid that is sent out each year. So for as much as the, the amounts that are shown there, they'll be offset by about $400,000 that we'll receive in state aid. So these will be, these amounts, if approved tonight, will be budgeted as part of the township's 2021 general fund budget. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, does anybody have any questions on this? All right, I'd like to make a motion then to affirm the 2021 MMOs for the police pension and the non-uniformed employee pension. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you Supervisor DeSanto, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda is resolution number 2814, Authorization of the Destruction of Certain Public Records. Again, I'd like to call on our Director of Finance, Mr. Chris.
Thank you again, Chairman McDevitt. Items C and D in front of you are housekeeping items that staff brings before the board every year or so. Item C is Authorization to Destroy Public Records that are archived in the basement of the Township Building. The, the records that have been identified fall within the criteria of the Pennsylvania municipal retention records as being allowed to be destroyed. What we're trying to do is free up space in that basement. We have a lot of other records that we need to be able to provide storage for. And just as a matter of general housekeeping, it makes sense to, to be doing this. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Yeah, just one, one question on this. So do we keep a, like a, a computer version of this, or did we just? I know, I know it's only certain, certain amount of years you have to keep it. Do we keep it archived, though?
So, so of these, of this set of records that are being destroyed, we do not have electronic copies of them.
Okay.
Now, you may recall that earlier this year, the board authorized the purchase of a document management system.
Right.
Which we will begin scanning records. We're starting with the township property records and will be moving on to other departments within the township. A decision hasn't been made about some of these older records that are in the basement. We'll be, we'll be discussing those at some point and reviewing those case by case.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, so I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2814, Authorization of the Destruction of Certain Public Records. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you Supervisor Givanas, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next one is kind of similar to the last one, which is Resolution Number 2815, Authorization of Disposal of Equipment. Again, Mr. Chris, you're up.
Thank you, Chairman McDevitt, I got it quicker that time. So again, a housekeeping item, we've got a number of pieces of equipment, a lot of old computer systems, monitors, keyboards, mouse, mice. We've, these systems have been sitting around our building for some time now. They've been determined to have no value because of the age and because of the useful condition. Any number of them are incapacitated. And prior to destruction, we always request approval from the board, permission to, to dispose of that equipment. Be glad to answer any questions you might have. If you have a long list, because we haven't done this for the last couple of years.
Okay.
I have, I have a question, Mr. Chair. Can we have Chief Pasquale look through the equipment and see if anything can be sold on the initiative? That's a joke, that was just a little joke, sorry.
If, if I could jump in for a second, Mr. Chairman, just to follow up on, on Chris's explanation. These are really out of date, older, older equipment that is really useless. As far as the documents, most of these are 20, 15 and 20-year-old personnel items that are really of, of no use and, and should be destroyed. So that's what this is, it's a housekeeping we try to do every year, sometime we do it every two or three. But it's important that some of these documents, important that they're destroyed because of the certain, certain information that shouldn't be out there and they have no relevant value to us. But anything that's important for historical purposes or institutional knowledge is kept.
Okay.
And just by way of example, to piggyback off of Mr. Hart's comments, one of the boxes that has been requested for destruction is message pads, message notes from the zoning department from 20 years ago. We have a whole box of message slips that were retained.
Right.
All right.
I got a question.
Yes.
Yeah, some of them are yours, Joe.
What's that?
Some of the notes are yours.
No, no. I know that was from the turn of the century, but. Mr. Chris, I noticed there's, there's a long list of hard drives that you had on the docket there that get destroyed. They will be appropriately cleaned before they're like disposed of?
That's correct.
In terms of data?
Yes, Supervisor Givanas, there's, there's a process we follow to, to wipe the drives, but after that, to actually physically destroy the drives to make them inoperable. All of the guidelines of, of the police department.
I knew you would do that, but I just wanted to get that on the record.
Great.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2815, Authorization of the Disposal of Equipment. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Chairwoman Capalletti, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda is the Authorization to Advertise for an RFP for banking. Okay, next item on the agenda is the authorization to advertise for an RFP for banking services. Again, I'd like to call on our director, Mr. Chris.
Thank you again, Chairman McDavid. We, we last issued in our request for proposals for banking services back in twenty fourteen. At that time, it was a three-year contract that was issued, and at that time, it was Continental Bank, who is now, of course, Bryn Mawr Trust. After the three years are up, we just continued the contract on a year-by-year basis. As with all of our service contracts, we review them and, and make a decision that it's important that we're obtaining the best possible services at the best possible price. So it seemed appropriate this year to, to go out for those banking services and to release the RFP. We'd be hoping to do that during the month of October, and then award something later this year so that we can start twenty twenty-one with a clean slate. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions? Okay, none being then, I'd like to make a motion to approve authorization to advertise for the RFP for banking services, do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you Supervisor DeSanto, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, the next item on the agenda is affirming abatement of business privilege tax penalties and interest charges. Again, Mr. Chris, you're a busy guy tonight.
And I'm very, feeling very, very special as well, so.
As you should.
You may recall earlier this year, the Board of Supervisors, in response to the COVID situation and the shutdown of businesses, approved the extension of the filing for the business privilege tax for, for township businesses. It was extended to May fifteenth of, of twenty twenty. Well, at the same time, the federal government extended the tax filing for tax returns, for federal tax returns, July fifteenth, twenty twenty. We had a handful of businesses who got confused and didn't file by the May fifteenth deadline, but instead used the July fifteenth deadline. Those businesses contacted the township, asking for abatement of the penalty and interest. There were a total of six businesses who did so. Businesses include Corbo Landscaping, Inc., Earth Engineering, Inc., Miles Construction, Pendlin Enterprises, Inc., Valley Forge Properties, L.P., and Capone's Restaurant, Inc. Each of them asked that the board to consider abating their penalty and interest charges. The amounts ranged from small amounts in the five, ten dollar range, the, the most expensive was in the hundred to the hundred and fifty dollar range. And the staff is asking the board to, to consider approving, or we contacted those businesses and let them know that we're looking favorably upon the abatement penalty and interest, that it was, you know, reasonable to do, given the circumstances, and we'd ask the board to, to affirm that decision.
Okay. Any questions or concerns on this from the board?
I have one, I have a question. Mr. Chris, I understand that we're talking about six businesses, and, and they're really low-dollar amounts. Would this open the door for other businesses to be looking for the same accommodation?
I, I suppose it's possible, I did go back and check the filings of businesses, and it, it appears to me like the vast majority of businesses did file their taxes by the, the business privilege taxes by the May fifteenth deadline.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the abatement of business privilege tax penalties and interest charges, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you Chairwoman Capaletti, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Nay? Okay, you don't agree?
I don't.
Okay, that's fine. Motion carries. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is engagement of the Emergency Services Consulting International to perform a fire protection study. I'd like to call on Mr. Hart to go over this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you recall, we've had numerous discussions over the last few years about the challenges that volunteer fire companies are having all over the country. East Norton, there's no different. Things have changed in society. Don't, you know, most of us don't work right down the street, or yet we're close enough to our homes and our community as we did in prior years, which makes it all the more difficult to, to have volunteers, even eager volunteers, available to, for fire protection for the community in, to the same extent that was available in years past. We have a dedicated group of volunteers, Chairman McDavid, as, as a longtime example. But again, it, it is, it is a different time. There are challenges, so many different challenges that go, that go into becoming and being active volunteer fire company, it's, it's a significant amount of training. It's getting up in the middle of the night, it's during the day early, you're going to work, and it's, it is a challenge all across the Commonwealth, like I said, and the Commonwealth, along with municipalities, are trying every type of initiative to help provide more support through our volunteer fire companies to promote and recruit and, and retain your firefighters. That being said, during these times where we know we have these challenges, even when you have a, a dedicated group that has, that is committed to it, we know that the numbers aren't there the way they were in the past. East Norton Township is following the lead of several other municipalities that went out and looked for a professional, a, a professional fire protection consulting company to do a comprehensive review of everything, from the township's response, the, the, every obligation we, we owe to our residents, from equipment to staffing, to everything under the sun, how we do it now, and the challenges and the evolution of the fire services over the next ten, fifteen, and twenty years. So, we thought it was prudent, really critical, to engage a company that would do this report for us. They would do the report from a township perspective, because townships have the requirement to provide protection services to their residents. Many of us in, in my county and across the Commonwealth, that, many municipalities are served by volunteer fire companies. So this, this particular company will do a very thorough, comprehensive review from a township perspective, and then from a fire company perspective, they will interview the board of supervisors, they will interview staff, they will interview the, the general membership of the fire company, they will interview the leadership of the fire company, and all, all of our professionals to come and, to put together a really comprehensive plan for us going forward. And I think it is not inexpensive, it is thirty-eight, I think the, the cost is not to exceed, I think, thirty-six thousand six oh six. So it's not inexpensive, but is, it is truly critical for moving, moving the, the coming years with the challenges that present to our fire protection services. Before you tonight is an engagement letter and a contract for East Norton Township with Emergency Consulting International, Virginia, with outstanding references. They put together, we've saw many samples of their reports, really do a thorough job, very professional, and we look forward, we, we look forward to getting into these, that it takes about a month to put the information together, and then they, they have another ninety days for a report, and they will come and present it, and we will get a, a better understanding of, of where we are, where we need to go.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Any questions on the, the motion? Okay, no, no questions, and I'd like to make a motion to approve the engagement of the Emergency Services Consulting International to perform a fire protection study. Do I have a second?
A second.
Supervisor DeSanto, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda is Horizon House Appeal. I'd like to call on our solicitor, Mr. Kilkenny, to brief us on this.
Sure, thank you very much Chairman McDavid. Last year, the Board of Supervisors authorized my office to intervene and represent the township's interest in Horizon's application at twenty-nine, twenty-one Stone Creek Road here in East Norton Township. What they proposed here was essentially a group home, and there were, the township hired an expert before our zoning hearing board, and the zoning hearing board agreed with the township's position that the, the application for the group home should be denied and conditions be placed on the group home. That decision was appealed to the Montgomery County Court of Common Police and argued last month. We received an order a couple of days ago, basically overturning the zoning hearing board's affirmation of the township's position related to the group home. We're clearly not against group homes, we just want to make sure the public health, welfare, and safety are protected. We understand that our group homes are protected under federal law, and we want to honor that, but we believe that there should be reasonable conditions related to fire, building codes, and other matters that need to be protected from, if a group home comes in, in East Norton Township. So we're recommending, so what happened is, is Judge Rothstein, the Montgomery County Court of Common Police, issued an order, essentially saying that the group home fits the definition of single-family, thus they are allowed. I would like to see, and I would like to recommend to the Board of Supervisors, that we understand Judge Rothstein's rationale on such. And to do that, we would have to file, join with the zoning hearing board, and file a notice of appeal to the Montgomery County Court of Common Police. Cost of that is a couple hundred dollars at this juncture, so it's not extremely expensive. And then we would evaluate the opinion and bring it back to the Board of Supervisors to see if we want to file something with the Commonwealth Court, which was the appellate court above the Montgomery County Court of Common Police. Obviously, group homes in East Norton, throughout the Commonwealth, are litigious. The, this area of law often changes, both in the federal and state decisions, so we, our office constantly monitors as such. So we feel this decision could have ramifications not only in East Norton, but throughout Montgomery County and the Commonwealth. So we think it would be prudent to at least to do due diligence and find out Judge Rothstein's rationale for issuing her decision, filing a notice of appeal in the Montgomery County Court of Common Police.
And, and Mr. Chairman, if I could just give one example for, for any of the public who happen to be new to this topic, to give an example, if, if you're putting a group home in East Norton Township, you need to apply for a conditional use, which has a, a, a list of requirements. One of those requirements is that they be, there be a fire, a sprinkler system. This particular house, we were told many different things, but the last thing we were told was there was going to be three individuals there with a variety of conditions, but they were immobile. Wheelchairs are bed-bound. And the, the company, the Horizon House, argued that even still, they will not put in fire, a sprinkler system. And they went to court, and unfortunately, in this stage of the court proceeding, they won. But the township's position, especially from a codes perspective, has not changed. We think it is critical for public welfare, for the, for the health and safety of inhabitants of, of these group homes and the neighbors, the nearby residents, that these basic protections are in place. And that's why we have been passionate about this, and, and we, we would want a little more guidance from the court before we know which position to move forward with.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Any questions on this item?
I don't have any questions, but I kind of want to expand upon, upon what Mr. Hart just said. It's, it's for the safety of the people living there, for the, for our neighbors, it's also for the safety of our first responders who, God forbid, there is a fire, and there's no fire suppression system or sprinkler system there. You know, as you know, Mr. Chair, you're going in there to get the people out and to make sure that they get out to safety, and if they're bound by, if they're bound to a bed or, or to the wheelchair, and they get caught or stuck, it makes your, it makes it more difficult for you to be able to get those people out, there are firefighters, to be able to get those people to safety, and it puts you at, at risk then, or, you know, even our EMTs or police officers in a variety of different ways, they might end up in, in a similar situation where they're, they're hurt or something. So this, this, what we have in place, this ordinance that we have in place wanting this, is about our neighbors and our community and our first responders, and taking care of our first responders, as well as the people who are living in those homes.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, none being, I'd like to make a motion to approve the appeal for Horizon House for the decision of the common, the Court of Common Police of Pennsylvania. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you Chairwoman Capaletti, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda is the schedule, it looks like it's kind of a brief one, Monday, November, or October twelfth, twenty twenty, Columbus Day, the offices will be closed. Tuesday, October third, twenty twenty, the zoning hearing board meeting. Saturday, October seventeenth, at nine o'clock, we're having a shredding event. Wednesday, October twenty-first, twenty twenty, at seven o'clock is the planning commission. And then Tuesday, October twenty-seventh, is the executive session and the Board of Supervisors. Let's see. That's the month. Okay. Get back to where I'm supposed to be, okay, I'd like to ask if there's any citizens to be heard. Nate, do you have anybody in the, in the group?
There are no citizens to be heard emails, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, do we have any, any supervisors again, would like to make any closing comments? Yeah, I, I would just like to, to say and give kudos to our township staff for trying to be somewhat normal with some of the programs that we've been doing. I know we had the sensational Soul Cruisers on Friday night, looked like it was a nice turnout. As a matter of fact, when I, when I, when I went to work today, some people from work that live in Warminster came to East Norton, and they, they said how great of a event it was, and they felt very safe, and it was, it was well done. Also, some of the drive-in movies that we've been doing, even though, you know, the movies, I'm not too keen on some of the, they've had, but hopefully we'll do better. But yeah, no, it's, it's been great for the staff and everybody at hand, the police department for helping out. I saw that there was a fire truck there, so that's, that's really commendable. Also, just in general, our, our staff, our code enforcement, our, our, our secretaries and police and fire, just trying to get through this crazy time, I think they've, they've really done a lot to keep East Norton going. I know that some people at times, there's been some, some high blood pressure, I guess, and a little bit of frustration on our residents' part, and I hope that they take in consideration that everybody's trying to do their best to get through this troubling. to get through this troubling situation. And East Norton, our staff and our police and other first responders are here to help our residents. And I definitely feel we have their best interests at heart. So that's all I have to say for that. Any other comments? Okay, none being, any other business? All right, Township Manager's update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick comment on our trunk or treat event. So East Norton, like every other township, was actively preparing for their, for our Halloween events. And then yesterday, as, as typical, TDC came out with its recommendations and about much of the Halloween events and put them in the high risk category. So we were preparing for this. We, and I will say there'll be information out on social media in the coming days. We will not be having a trunk or treat, which is a really big event, popular event here, very successful. However, we, as you said earlier, and, and I appreciate the kind words for all of our staff, we are working hard, thinking outside the box, trying to, trying to be conscious of everyone's health and safety, but still give our residents fun things to do. So there, we are in the process of working on a, in front of the township building, there will be a, a drive-through Halloween event. And again, more deep amount where residents will be encouraged to, their children in costumes, decorate their cars, come through. There'll be a, a no contact dispersing of, of, you know, treats and candies and giveaways that we're working with businesses for donations as well, for, for different goodie bags. So we're looking to put together a fun event and a safe event. So be, stay tuned in the coming days, you'll hear more information on that. And as far as our residents coming into the building, again, you mentioned it where people, I mean, we all know, we're all stressed out dealing with the effects of COVID and the concerns of COVID. Our staff is as stressed out as anyone else. We all have challenges at home and family, but I want our residents to know we, we understand the stress out there. We're doing everything we can to be cognizant of it and to be responsive as quickly as possible with the challenges of COVID. But please be assured that we, you know, we may be delayed on certain things a day or two, but we will be there and we will make, get the job done for you. And if residents, we want them to feel comfortable coming into the building when they need to. We, as a staff and, and the entire staff, we put, we have sanitization policies and practices that are in effect and are strict and that are consistent mask requirements. Everybody that comes in our building from staff is, every day has a checklist, they are temperature checked. We have a lot of precautions and procedures. So we, we want to assure people that we're doing everything we can to keep them safe when they come in the building. Lastly, and I don't want to hold this meeting up too long, I just wanted to, I know there are people that listening in regarding the St. Titus issue. I can tell you that our attorneys, our solicitor's office are in discussions, continued discussions right now with the attorney for St. Titus. And we'll bring you any information as soon as we have, hope to have some positive information soon. But we don't have anything concrete to, to provide to the community yet, but stay tuned. As soon as we do, we will be out there with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for our manager? Okay, none being, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you Supervisor Givanas, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. Be safe.
Be safe, everybody.
Good evening, everyone.